I'd like to call the meeting to order. Whittier School Committee Meeting, August 8th. I was gonna say 1918. No!
Bad year.
If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by one, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Donna, would you like to speak?
Are you sure?
Okay.
She'd like to get rid of me.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the approval-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the acceptance of Wednesday, June 13th, regular meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, one abstention.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the acceptance of June 13 minutes of executive session.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I missed that part last time around, okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Lisa, abstention. Before we get to number C, letter C, I was going to do something first, and I forgot. I would like to introduce Chip O'Connor. He's our new member from West Newbury. And we welcome you aboard.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Okay.
Welcome.
And I understand you have a child here at school?
I do. Allison O'Connor, she will be a senior this year.
A senior, nice, good. She had a good experience?
She's had a great experience.
That's awesome, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks.
All right, we'll go to the Treasurer's Report.
Madam Chair, I move the acceptance of the Treasurer's Report.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the Treasurer's Report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? No? Hold business, we were supposed to do the superintendent's evaluation at this meeting, but we only have seven responses. I would like to have at least a majority, I would like to get ten.
I'm gonna get mine, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
I'm gonna get mine down.
Okay. So if you would hand them in to- Chip, I don't expect you to do one, obviously. But whoever hasn't, if you would please get them in to Lisa, and we will definitely do that. It's not Vedamareen to do it with just six or seven responses, so I would appreciate that. Yes?
Just a point of order.
Uh-oh.
We have a memo, in accordance with the J.J.F. Student Activity Accounts, the following actions are required. Is this something that we need to vote on?
Yes, we need to have a vote on the student activity authorization.
I would like to move that the school committee authorize the principal to accept money for the following existent- existing student activity organizations. Oh my goodness. As per the memo.
I got it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Now, this is to accept the money? It doesn't say anything about spending the money?
No.
Okay, I missed it. Sorry, I didn't realize there was a second page to the Treasurer's Report. I'm looking.
It's to authorize the usage. By law, we're supposed to bring it to you every year so that you see that these are the student activity accounts, and it allows- it actually authorizes the principal to be the one to receive and spend money from the student accounts.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Just as a point of order on spending money, it has to be a roll call vote. Any authorization to spend money has to be a roll call vote.
Spending or appropriating?
Either or.
Just do it, it's easier. Dick. Scott wants a roll call.
No, I don't want a roll call, I just- that's required by law.
I disagree, but that's okay. Dick?
What is it, what is the motion?
About authorizing the principal to accept the money from the student activities account.
Yes.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Dave?
Aye.
Brett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Okay.
Sure.
We've already voted, so, okay.
No, no, it's okay.
That's all right.
I'm okay with it, I just want to know, if you accept that money, how do you, like, how do you manage it? Like, do you just hand it over to the treasurer? Is that how it works?
Yeah, okay, so you're- it goes through you, and then you- right.
You're not expected to manage the funds. Thank you.
Oh, you did too?
Yeah. You made sure of that. Yeah.
You did that. And I didn't either, yeah, okay. I didn't really see that.
Did I do it? Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, we don't have a student representative to report because there is no school. And we could have our superintendent's report, if you would.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee. Tonight, before you offer informational purposes, I have the hires of an assistant principal, a welding instructor, a long-term sub, a working forer, a district safety and security director, a route bus driver, a security office student mediator, a security officer, a security officer, route bus driver, a certified nursing assistant instructor for the evening school summer program. Update for student immunization records, a nurse, cluster chairs for the 2018-2019 school year, Spanish translator for the 2018-19 school year, co-op liaisons for the 2018-2019 school year, game clock officials for this school year, and event ticket collectors for this school year. Also before you-
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Is Adam Gagnon a in-house?
He is not.
He is not.
Also before you are resignations of an assistant principal, a tutor, and a carpentry instructor for retirement purposes. There is no budget update at this time, there is not an MCAS update at this time. I hope that at the September meeting I'll be able to update you on MCAS scores because they are changing. On Monday, June 18th, I attended the Amesbury School Committee along with member Tony LaSage. At this meeting, we were able to give a brief Whittier Tech update. On Wednesday, June 20th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Directors Meeting at Northern Essex Community College. On Wednesday, June 27th, I attended the MAVA Board of Directors' Annual Meeting in Marlborough with Kelly Fay, our Coordinator of Curriculum and Professional Development. On Tuesday, May 10th through Friday, Ju- Tuesday, July 10th through Friday, July 13th, I attended the MASs Executive Institute in Falmouth along with the Director of People Personnel, Patty Lowell. This year's focus was on social-emotional learning and computer science. On Monday, August 6th, I attended a reception at Northern Essex welcoming Haverhill's new Superintendent Margaret Marata and Dugan Sherwood, Haverhill's new President of the Chamber of Commerce. I really would like to welcome them to our community, and hopefully we will be able to all work together. On Tuesday, August 7th, and today, I attended the MAVA Board of Directors' Planning Retreat in Devid's, and I will also be attending tomorrow with the Commissioner, we'll be speaking at that event. I would like to remind everyone of the golf tournament for the Whittier Tech Foundation on August 16th. We are still accepting players and sponsors, and this is probably the last chance I'll get to say in public, last year I was the winner. I don't know if my team looks as strong this year, because I'm playing with my husband, but anyway. So, you know, please feel free to, if you'd like to sponsor a tee, if you'd like to come to lunch, last year was such a great event that we're looking forward to the August 16th event. The administrative team had a retreat for two days in July. During this retreat, we had professional development on social-emotional learning and how to incorporate SEL competencies in the classroom. Later this month, the administrative team will again have more professional development on calibrating teacher evaluations. We continue to prepare for the beginning of the school year. Unfortunately, we are behind in the renovation of the new Allied Health Center. At this point, we're hoping it will be open for open house the first week of November. So, that is a bit of a disappointment for us. This is my first time through construction, and wow, the bidding process and, you know, the hoops that you have to jump legally is pretty intensive, and we're really behind. But we're hoping to open up bids, I believe, next week or the following weeks, so that we can finally get going on this, on this project. But it's really exciting to have the new Allied Health Center and a new dental assisting program, and we're very hopeful that we'll have it ready to go for November 1.
Maureen, do we already have students waiting for this?
Yes. Yeah, so we're gonna have to do classroom work. You know, this will- we definitely- kids will be busy.
Yeah.
But we definitely won't have the health center open at that point. We've begun to complete- we have begun to complete renumbering the entire school, which you would think would be an easy project, but not so easy. But we want to make it easier for safety officials to find classrooms in the building. We've had a- we have our new security person, our new security director really looked around the building and said, "This is an issue." So one of the things is we're renumbering every classroom. We are also putting the numbers in each classroom above the door, so if a student was aware of what classroom they're in and what number they're in. And then we're also putting the numbers outside on the windows, that if a safety person needed to come into the building, they would be able to go from the outside of the building to see where the classroom numbers are. So, we have some, you know, it's nice to have somebody else looking at it from new eyes to make sure that our students are safe and our staff is safe. But, so there will be no numbers for the classrooms on the outside at all to identify them? Oh, no, there'll be numbers on the outside, there'll be numbers on the inside, there'll be numbers on the outside of the door, yeah, so, yes.
So, from outside of the building, like you're on the grass, looking at the building, you can see?
Right, what number?
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a bigger project than you would think, but we're excited, and we think that it's well worth the time and the effort that, to make this happen.
Is this part of the securing the building, making sure that the entrances are covered, you know how many?
Yes.
Keeping people coming through a-
Right.
Central door?
Right. I mean, right now, to be honest, if there was an emergency, I would always ask what the teacher's name was, because the building numbers were a little confusing. So I used to go by a teacher's name, but someone from the outside doesn't know the teacher. So this is just a smarter way, I think, of, for our safety of our building.
Have you ever done a school safety assessment here? A formal school safety assessment?
I believe we have, a few years ago.
Because those are, those are good to do. They're usually thirty to forty-page reports on literally everything.
Yeah.
They look at everything, things you don't even think of.
Yeah.
I know a lot of states are now requiring school districts to do that at least once every year. Now Florida's requiring, and a bunch of schools are requiring. It's a very in-depth report on just about everything.
Yeah.
Even things that you don't think would be a safety issue, they addressed in those things. I think they're really good to do every couple of years.
Yeah, I'll take a look at, at any organizations that do that. The great thing, our new security director is a former retired police officer, and was also a trainer for the MBTA, so he really has a really good sense of security within the building. So we're really- but I will definitely look into that as well.
So Maureen, the fourth floor, you'd be able to see down this is the fourth floor?
We hope so, you know, yeah. I mean, it's the best we can do, but we definitely feel like it's a worthwhile event for us to do that, so, you know, there's also the, the windows are a little off-colored.
Yes.
So, you know, there's many, but we feel like we can at least try.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the, the security issue. If we have a couple of doors, or let's say you're down in the auto body shop, or the garage, and they have the garage doors open on a hot day like today, are we gonna go absolutely nuts on security and make them keep all the doors closed and locked?
It's always a- we have sort of an open campus, when you think about, we have a culinary program, we have an auto tech program, so that's where we really are gonna count on the people inside the building. You know, I truly feel that school safety is about the people inside the building. If you see something that doesn't feel right, tell somebody. If- we need to watch out for our kids, we need to be making sure our kids are taken care of. You know, that to me is, you know, if you see a student that's having a difficult time, somebody should be addressing that, and really making sure that, you know, there's the locking the doors, but then there's taking care of all the people inside the building. And I think, I feel like that is even more important, and that's something that we're really focusing on this year with social-emotional learning. So, yes, but no.
That, Mike, that was sort of a question, is where we draw the line on security, and how tight do we want to keep the building if, I mean, you can go for 100% security, but this is not a jail, this is a-
Exactly.
-school.
Exactly.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to-
No, I understand what you're saying, and that's, that's a diff- it's a balancing act that we have to follow.
And we also have a security team, which a lot of schools don't have, because we have, we're open to the public.
Right.
So having a security team with eyes and ears on all-
Right, and we have somebody at the guard check that should be checking traffic.
And they do.
And we have these new fancy, not that this, this isn't for everybody, but the new name badges that will open up doors for people in the building. So it's, you know, we're, we're getting ourselves there, but it's, it's really one step at a time. So, and that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, then.
Wait, I have one more thing.
Madam Chair.
I just have a question when you're, when you're done.
Okay.
I just have a question about something that's two.
On what I just said?
Um, no. No. No, I just wondered if we, if we, if we didn't need to hire a food service manager because you, we had Witsen's.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes. So Witsen's hired, Witsen's hires a food service person, that person has been hired.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And I think it's starting next week. Yeah. See, I was right, next week.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation that the school committee vote to approve the appointment of Charles Early as an attendance monitor.
Okay.
Second.
Your second? Any discussion?
I just was curious to know if it was, he will also be doing security and the attendance?
Nope, he will be attendance monitor.
Oh, he's being hired, oh, and he's not resigning, or what is he doing now?
He's just switching jobs.
Switching jobs, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question, is this a new position, or is this a reshuffling of our former attendance security position?
This is our attendance monitor left mid-year this year. Mr. Early filled in with, as the interim, and now I would like to make him a permanent attendance monitor.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Want to get Dick?
I'm sorry, I didn't even see-
You don't need to, but you can.
You can come out of the corner now.
Well, that's right, yeah, we got, we got. I have a motion.
Yes.
It is the superintendent's recom- I would like to move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation that the school committee vote to establish a community services and post-secondary early college program advisor position. This position will be grant-funded for 2018-2019 year. The job description is attached, as we all have. That's the motion.
Second?
Scott's.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you, Scott, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in- oh, Gary?
So, in this, in this position, it'll be a guidance position, or something totally separate from?
It's separate, so it would be somebody that would be working with guidance, that would be working with the Director of People Personnel, that would be working with the vocational coordinator, that would be working with the Director of Night School. So it's somebody that can coordinate all these programs that have been kind of, you know, coming our way for the last couple of years, and we really need somebody to coordinate that project.
Public relations, also?
Some public relations, some recruitment, yeah.
Thirty-two years.
Now we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I started.
And now we will have our principal, Chris Legzie Legatus. I'm not telling. So if any of you, anybody else has nicknames, mm-mm, they're gonna be found out.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee. Happy summer to you, and also I feel privileged again to be your principal for another, another year or so. That's funny, I'm just thinking of the Legzie comment, my nickname, that was a good, that's a beach, that's a beach nickname, so that's good. Anyway, I have in front of you the evaluation of the school improvement plan from 2017-18. You can see all the highlights, and that's stuff we read on going, or we completed, as you can see. Any questions on that? Will we begin into the new round?
Yes, I just looked at one fine. 1.7, the district will increase in expanded efforts to prepare students for college and career readiness, and was hiring the coordinator listed? I didn't see, I flipped through to the second one, which is the visit one, and I didn't see that there, did it say?
It didn't, because it wasn't approved by the school committee.
Oh, so not, not like we will attempt to?
But when we get there, you could add that to, so that it can be approved by the school, since it's been approved by the school committee.
Okay. Gotcha. Okey-dokey, sorry about that, all right.
Good question.
Continue.
Very good question.
Chris, I have one, it's not a question, it's a comment.
Yep.
I don't know if anybody else had a problem, but I had a really difficult time reading with the blue marker.
Yes, you know, and I-
I had to open it up wide, and then I couldn't get the whole screen, I had to keep sliding back and forth, but maybe it's just me.
You're talking on the 18-19, no, I went with that, and I said that, I'm gonna take the responsibility like a teacher on that, and I tell you that I should have probably highlighted it in a different highlight, because I had the same. And what I did was, and not fair, that I highlighted mine in red, I went and did it because I couldn't see it.
Thanks a lot.
I apologize for that. And I, and I'll go through, I, what I did is I highlighted a few sections in 18-19 that we can kind of go through.
Okay.
And then, you know, hopefully if, if that draft is approved, then we can take, take away the, the blue part, but I thought blue meaning go.
Yeah, well-
So make that as an amendment?
Yeah, yeah, so, I apologize, I did, I did see that, though, very, very observant of you, Madam Chair.
Well, I couldn't read it.
I think online, if you, if you open up a little, you can, you can read it, but when you, when you, if you print it out, it's tough to read.
No, it was in my tablet here, and I, and I could read it when I opened it.
It's blurry.
Oh, it's blurry.
It is blurry, but you can read it, but then you can't see the whole line, you've got to slide everything, so, that's okay.
No, well noted, next year I'll have it nice and highlighted with the yellow. Sorry about that. Need a, oh. Well, for the, for the 17-18 evaluation, and we'll get to the 18-19.
Okay, so I jumped the gun.
That's okay.
Okay. There was one, was, I thought I marked it, but it didn't seem to stay with me.
You have to press save, and it-
I did.
And takes you out of the document, which we-
Yes, I know.
Do you want to add to 1.7, the- Yes, oh, but, okay, do you want to do that while she's-
Oh, yeah, there it is. Yeah, it just popped up.
Career counseling advisor-
So this is one we're on now.
To the 1.7.
Liaison, yep.
You're all gonna second that and say, "Sure, that sounds great." Okay, he's nodding, he's nodding, so he seconded it. Just adding the advising, the advisor position that we just voted for, add it to the 1.7. Which is about getting our kids' career and, yeah, okay.
I did have a question, Chris, on, now see, I gotta go back and make it smaller On the highlighted part, it says, "Whittier Tech continues to work with the Haverhill-Methuen Partnership of the Shannon Grant. Through this program, Whittier Tech works in conjunction with Haverhill High." Is it just Haverhill, or does any of this apply to any of the other districts in their high schools?
You know what, it, I'm not sure, probably could, but I know we have been working in the past, that's the Above the Influence and that Shannon Grant. I know that we partnered with Haverhill in doing that, so I'm sure, I'm sure if we expanded it to the other schools, we probably could do that.
With the police department of Haverhill.
Of Haverhill, yeah, okay.
So, our Coordinator of Curriculum and Professional Development attends many meetings at the Haverhill Police Department, along with the City of Haverhill, to develop this grant.
Don't think any of the other communities-
I don't think so.
No.
They not apply for it?
Mine, I think it's more of geared towards the third and-
Got it, got it, makes sense.
But I think that's quite good, it would reach 75% of our students from this-
That's true, that's true.
That's the program that brings the Above the Influence and the Hidden Plain Sight and all those, you know, for the parents and the staff and students, and so it's, it's been a great program for us.
Okay. I had one more question, what is a Google Classroom?
So, if, you know, if you're familiar with Google, you know, Google has many different facets to it, and one is, you know, Google Classroom, exactly what it says, that you, you're, we're in communication with our iPads, with the teachers, in communication with instruction in the iPads, and it's an actual classroom that they can, you know, communicate online in, you know, transferring work, or any type of, you know, it's, it's a tough question to ask, because I'm not IT, but it's definitely, it's, it's what we've gone to, the Google Classroom. It's like, that's what we're doing, everything's, has been in Google, Google Share and Google Classroom, so where, you know, kids can get homework at home on their iPads, you know, I know we have some parents here, I'm sure, you know, you could see that, you know, the communication with the, with the staff, I mean, with the teachers back and forth, and homework, or whatever it is, but it's the, you know, there's the Showbee, there's other apps that are, that are developed, but now it's all in Google Classroom. Google's taken over everything, pretty much. It's been successful for us.
One of the things Chris and I and the administrative team have, have talked a lot about over the summer is using the technology, and having teachers Google certified, and having teachers Apple certified, and so that the technology is being used throughout, integrating the technology in the classroom as a real tool. We're very lucky that the school committee has supported us in our technology program, and it's really time for, for us to really make sure our kids are receiving the best technological skills, so that when they leave Whittier, they're, they're very prepared. You know, you don't see people carrying books, or, you know, one of the things, for instance, we're doing the code book and electrical program, and that is online now. You don't see people carrying a big code book anymore, they carry their iPad and research it, or their tablet, so that's something that would-
Better for their backs.
Yeah, so that's something we continue, it's, it's evolving, but I feel like it's time for us to take our technology program here at Whittier to the next level, so that is part of the Google Classroom and the Apple program.
Okay. Okay, I wondered what, I figured it was something like that, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
But thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're doing great here.
It seems like Google is taking over, you know.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Do we need a vote on this?
Yeah, this, any vote on the school?
About five minutes.
Well, yeah, okay. All right, do I have a motion to accept the school improvement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions, none, great.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. So let's move to the, the 18-19 draft of the school improvement plan, and what I did is I, I, you know, if we can't, I apologize for the, the blue highlights, but what I did was, I, I just highlighted a few areas, and what, basically what we've been talking about, the curriculum, the technology, and the, and the social emotional learning. So if you see 1-1 and 1-2, a lot of those, you know, curriculum adjustments that we did last year, you know, and we're still updating, is basically monitoring and preparing for the MCAS 2.0, as you can see, so that you see everything MCAS 2.0, which is now the test is going to be online. So we talk technology, the kids are going to be tested come March for English, May in math, and I don't believe the science is going to be online, but the two are going to be online. So this preparation here, you know, is what we're doing, you can see some of those adjustments on 1-1, 1-2. You know, the staff and students and their hard work, as well as, we thank the committee, like Superintendent Lynch says, to give us the resources, you know, as we continue to prepare and maintain those excellent scores, because this test is a whole new test online. If you want to turn the page to 1-7, you know, that's what Superintendent Lynch is talking about, and we're talking about, and what Madam Chair talks with the Google Classroom, as we continue our focus on the integration of technological skills within the classroom, as we prepare our kids for college and career readiness. So that's what we're doing, we're getting, you know, the classrooms, and, and we're asking for, you know, not certifications, but to get to different levels, and some staff members that are already at those levels, will go above and beyond something else technological. So, and obviously, it's, it's all about the children, and preparing them for college and career readiness. If you can flip through, again, I'm just highlighting, and we'll go back if there are any questions. If you flip through 2-1, 2-2, again, we go back to what Sup and Lynch, Superintendent Lynch was talking about, and the safety of the building, and this is our big push this year, and added to it, is the SEL, the social emotional learning, which is a new initiative that we're adding on. If you remember last year, you know, we want to incorporate these strategies, these social emotional strategies within the classroom. If you remember last year, we had the growth mindset, and, you know, positive messages, and, and delivering those every day to the kids, and now we are, you know, enhancing that with the social emotional learning within the classroom. You know, and, so what I mean by that is our, our staff as well, before we left, which I, I can't believe it's already, you know, we're starting up again, before we left, they were, we supplied them with summer reading, and it's called the social emotional learning of the classroom, and everybody is reading that, and that's going to be for PD for the staff. We're also, you know, if you talk about social emotional learning, it's exactly what it says, it's, you know, developing those positive relationships and connecting with students, you know, learning those skills, developing social emotional skills, controlling emotions and behaviors. You know, I, I think a lot of, not just with students and adults, we all have to think about this, and, and having empathy for others. It's almost like, you know, you have to stop and take a breath sometimes before you, you don't want to lash out, you want to think about what you're saying. So this is all the connections that we're, we're going to do, and this PD that we're going to incorporate within our classrooms and the management. You know, these are great skills that, you know, will set up our students once again to succeed in every facet of school, as well as, you know, when they graduate to their careers or, or college. So that's our big push this year, the social emotional, you know, and it's, it's part of the safety, it's part of just about everything that we do. So, that's all I have highlighted, do we have any questions?
Does this need to be voted on? Yes, okay. We also need a vote to accept this, do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any further discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, okay.
Hey, thank you, everyone.
You're all set, Legzie, have a seat.
Legzie.
You're the best.
Kara, I got nothing for you.
You're going to make me follow somebody named Legzie, that's just not fair. No, I have no nickname.
I love it.
Madam, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee, good evening. I hope you've all had a wonderful summer so far, it's been rather hot, and it's not over yet. In your packet, you have the standard things that you see from me at the end of the year, you have your variance analysis, and you also have the transfer request, and the transfer request aligns to the variance report. If you notice this variance report, it has columns, and the columns align to what we're requesting in the transfer. The transfer will bring all of the district accounts to a positive balance at year-end, and then the last column in that variance report will show you what the ending balance will be in each account after the transfer. Are there any questions? Mr. Tucker?
Yes, we do several transfers throughout the year. Maybe one a quarter of roughly, now, I, I thought those were to adjust our balance as we went through the year. Now we're at the end of the year, and we've got $900,000 that we're going to transfer.
We don't do, we don't do all of the transfers. Usually at the beginning of the year, I adjust for salary adjustments, people who have classification changes, they go, they cross credits, new hires, we have different people who come in, different people who resign, so usually I do those in October. In June, I bring forward to you a request for needed materials and things that we're going to buy for the next year, that is actually part of the budgeting process that we do. And then at the end of the year, and I think I do say this in June, but, you know, we don't see each other for 60 days, so we probably forget, I always bring forward a transfer for you in August that basically balances all the accounts, because you have to remember when we do a budget, we're doing a budget in January that is for something, some of the things that aren't going to happen until 18 months later. So there's a lot of fluidity in the accounts, many accounts go over, more accounts are under. I don't know who's going to be on health insurance, I don't know if we're going to have unemployment, so at the end of the school year, I always do a, an account, and that's why it's rather substantial, because it's every account that's in there that has any slight deviation gets transferred.
I, I understand that we haven't seen you for 60 days, and, and the transfers, you're closing out the book. It just seems that $900,000 seems like a lot, considering how we've made transfers throughout the year, now we, we come to the end of the year, and we still want another million dollar transfer.
Well, let me, let me, let me explain. We deliberately stopped a lot of purchasing in FY18, knowing that we were going to need the money for the Allied Health Center. The Allied Health Center did not get any bids, so, in, in time, as Superintendent Lynch explained earlier. So what we did was, we need to free up that money at some point, we have freed up money for next year by taking care of some things this year that we were able to prepay.
Okay, I just wanted to express my concern.
No, no, and, and, and absolutely, and, and it was, it was difficult, because we, you know, we planned accordingly, but as the superintendent says, construction is interesting, and sometimes you don't know what's going to happen when, and so when life gives you lemons, you make lemonade, and you do what you need to do. So now we have freed up some money for next, for the year that we're in now, so when we do get the bids that are supposed to come in in two weeks, we expect that we will have some balances available to do the things that we would have liked to have done in FY18.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kara, I have one question.
Sure.
The remainder, the balance after all the transfers, is that an overage from last year's budget, or is, is that?
That's a surplus, and that will flow into our E and D.
Okay, that was what I was wondering, okay. Okay, I believe we need a vote on this.
Move approval of the FY18 budget transfers?
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote?
Sure.
To, for the transfer?
I demand one.
I don't. Okay, children. Dick?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Juliana?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Dave?
Aye.
Brett?
Yes.
And I'm E.S. Thank you, Kara.
Thank you, I'll go back and join Legzie at the.
Just have a quick question. Quick question.
Sure.
On the, on the overage that went into E and D, are we still within 5%?
Oh, yeah, we're way under 5%.
We took a good chunk out of that this year. Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. All right, do you want me to talk about the calendar now? Okay. I'm up, I guess. We, in September, we will review and get an update of the strategic plan, and hopefully we would do the superintendent's evaluation, and the superintendent's update on her goals. It's going to be a good meeting. But also, right here, I would like to discuss the, the calendar for the, the coming year. There has to be one change. In October, we are going to be meeting the week before, on the 3rd instead of the 10th.
October 3rd?
October 3rd. So just mark that on your calendars, and.
Is that a holiday or something?
Going to be. Our wonderful superintendent is finally going to take a vacation, so she won't be here on the 10th.
No way.
And I'm also taking a vacation that I planned so I wouldn't miss the school committee meeting, and I'm going to be away on the 3rd, so you're up, Brett.
You know.
So, you can do that, right?
Maybe we should take the month off.
Is that okay with you, Paul?
No.
A lot of phone calls, Lisa, remind them, remind everybody it's on 3rd.
October 3rd, all right, thank you very much. And this, and we'll go to the subcommittee reports, and the executive subcommittee has not met. Instructional and Personnel, Joanne, who else is on?
I'm on there.
Okay.
We have not met. I believe we met in June, or we recorded out, or May, May.
Okay, planned operations, Paul?
Well, we have a, minutes of a meeting, I'd like to ask that the school committee accept for, oh, I don't have a date, June 13th.
Yep, June 13th.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions, no?
And I would like to ask Superintendent if there's any need for a meeting prior to September, for updates on the bids or fields or health centers or any other.
There's all kinds of work going on, if the students would like to have a meeting in September before the school committee meeting.
How about an update at 6:15?
Okay.
Salary and negotiations, Mr. Early.
Ross said it this time.
Do you have minutes to approve?
We can approve the June 13th minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Policy, Mr. Irvin?
Yep, I have minutes for the 13th also, so move the acceptance in a minute.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
What we have for the second reading this evening, we have AC discrimination, non-discrimination, GBA, equal employment opportunity, GCF, professional staff hiring, JB, equal education opportunity, JFBB, school choice. All those have to do with just the addition of Pregnancy Fairness Act that was in the legislature recently, so we're adding that to those policies. And then two others, EFD, which is meal charge policy, and JJF, which we talked about earlier, school activities account. So I move that for second and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, great, thank you.
We need a, we'll need a meeting in September, so.
Okay.
I'm going to suggest maybe we meet a half an hour before then.
So I've got a 6, how about 5:45?
That's fine, whatever you think, I don't know how much we have at this point.
5:45 to 6:15.
Policy, 5:45.
It's be September 12th.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you. The next.
That's the subcommittee that means, right?
Yes.
Have you had a chance, Chip, to look at the subcommittees that we have?
Have not.
Okay.
Operations is the best.
If you have an interest in serving on any of them, we certainly would welcome your participation, so if you want to talk with Maureen about what they are and what they involve, if you're interested and are able to do it.
Lisa, if you have one of those forms on the back, with people's address plus.[1766.56]